I'm in a hard adjustment.
It is not. Hey, it's seven o'clock. Jamie's not here. Who said run the meeting? So here we are. So it's overnight 2025 Newfield payboy meeting. So everybody's got to go around introduce themselves. So AI knows who we are. John.
Uh, my name's John. John McGowan. Jeff Kuchar.
Catherine Tenoski.
Michael Price.
Bill Musser.
Jeff Feenstra.
And just three.
Okay. Um, first item on the agenda is muddy river smokehouse last meeting. Um, we brought up some tissues and it was left that Glenn and Jamie would go to the site and take a look and report back to him. So Jamie, I mean.
Well, Jamie's not here. Jamie was at the site one. Um, and so there are a couple of things for the board to, to talk this evening. Um, first, it does appear that they developed exactly how their site approved plan looks.
But.
From a, from a site perspective, and they have. Um. This information that should be helpful. They, they, they have a water meter that gives us daily flows, daily water flows for the site. Now, it's just been put on and he did provide me a week's worth of water meter readings. Um, and they, they indicate that they're well below the septic system. Um. Uh, gallons per day allowance. At their, the highest day was 1,500 gallons and they're up around 2,100 gallons as, as an approved system. Now here's, here are the, the issues that, and I just, I just got that water metering report information at the end of this week. I, he has told me that there's additional information in his spreadsheet that he, he didn't send me and he will send. Um, but I asked him the question. I wanted him to confirm that the water metering is for both the house and the restaurant. I think it's possible. It's only for the restaurant. Uh, so that being the case, then they are precarious, they're still precariously close to overcapacity of the septic system.
When they add the residents.
If they use their, if they use the, the house as a four bed. Yeah. Um, because that's, that's 600 gallons a day and that's, that brings that 1,500, which was the high day, but a low time. We're talking that was the first week of October, not the middle of the summer. So even though it was the busiest day of that week, I don't think that's reflective of the busiest time of their season. Um, and you can't, you, if, if, if there's any derivation from it, we're already, we're, we're already talking about real issues. So I am still waiting to, to see the spreadsheet and I am waiting to, um, confirm that we're talking about 1,500 gallons on an off season. High day for the week, but low day for the, for the actual restaurant, I would assume. Um, meaning that they're, it's too close to call. It's too close to call that we should be saying that the house should be able to be used as a residence.
Is, is there any way to reduce the number of usable bedrooms? Cause that's what it's based on, right?
Yes.
The, the thing that just.
The issue is, how do you monitor?
How do you enforce it?
How do you, I mean, they, they, they have, they have a system established for four bedrooms. They have a house that has four bedrooms in it. Um, if you say you're only going to use two bedrooms, like an ancient people living in two bedrooms, how I, how do you monitor that?
Or enforce it?
But the, I know.
That's a real issue.
If it comes. State does allow you to meter flow, but like you were saying, is it just a restaurant or?
Or the house is the house.
Yeah.
Houses as well. And I'm, I'm comfortable if we have a number, if that 1,500 gallons is reflective of their highest usage as the restaurant in a day, then, then you're looking at, um, being right at their design standard. And a design standard is a design standard. If they're really using 2,000 gallons a day or 2,100 gallons a day and their septic capacity is 2,100 gallons, then that's okay. But if that, if it isn't, if the, if the restaurant usage in its real season is 1,800, then, then that's going to be a stress on the septic system.
Do we know if that week included any special events? Because they have special events and they, my understanding is they're not closing the restaurant. They're adding a special event, whether it's a wedding or a car show or something.
They, it was, it was not a week that had special events. It, it was a standard week with their high days and their low days being the days that they are from, they, they know that's what their, their high and low days are.
I'm glad when you look at a capacity, does it have to be taken in a 24 hour period or is the septic system of recovery that you should think of it? Like what is the flow over a seven day average? Or is it best standard to use a daily flow? What's your answer?
I, I, I think that you should look at it as some sort of continuum. Because if isn't, you're, you're not always at the highest use, right? The only problem is if you're, if you exceed the highest use for extended periods of time.
But isn't the system designed on a, for a day basis?
It is. It is. It's designed to, in this instance, it is designed to work properly and function for the expected lifetime. And 2,100 gallons.
Yeah. And if it were designed to be an average over a week, it'd be gallons per average of a week, gallons per day.
I mean, the, 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 the standard is established as a gallons per day flow.
So I find it hard to believe that they're not going to exceed that.
It's challenging. It's, it's challenging. It's challenging. So I wouldn't, I, I do want to see more information. I do want to, if that 1,500 is really reflective of the house and the restaurant, then I don't think there's any concern at all. Yeah, that's a, that's.
Inhabited house, the uninhabited house?
I don't believe it's uninhabited. Maybe I shouldn't have said that out loud.
I, I don't see any reason why you.
Yeah.
There's an issue for you to say that out loud. Cause I think it's pretty obvious if you drive by the night state living house.
And so if they're hitting 1,500 and it's inhabited already, that's information.
That's, that's, that's information that absolutely supports the fact that the septic system is absolutely in great shape. Yep.
So, can I, for one second on the site, you indicated that feel the sites built according to the plan. So that means the rain garden down along the edge of the parking area has been properly constructed.
It seems to look like it is a functioning rain garden.
And the parking down towards the shed building, uh, the outdoor drinking part that's at the width that shows on the plan.
That, yes, it looks like it is constructed to what we approved.
So there was a little on the parking thing that, I thought there was a little discussion at the last meeting that the cars were maybe not parking in the direction that we had been told they would and that they, there would be no parking up against the barriers. They would, cars would be pulling in opposite of that and backing out towards that to go. Is that?
I'm sorry, we did not have that discussion with them at all.
So, so the plan as it was presented to the board showed additional thirteen spaces, only parking on the, on right side. If you're going in, not on the right.
I found it not with a bit where the barriers was, right?
And that's frankly the reason I brought that up at the meeting last month was because it's very obvious when you advise that there were cars parked all the way down to the shed building on both sides.
And of course we visited.
Nobody there.
And there was nobody there.
So there remains a question of whether or not the capacity of the parking is being overused.
Overused according to the Sinclair. I, I honestly can say I did not.
I deserve it.
I can't, I can't answer that question.
Fair.
Can I answer that question?
So I guess, Glenn, they're going to provide you with more information on septic flows, which I know from past experience, the state allows versus calculations of how many occupants and how many patrons and all that stuff.
Yeah. I, I mean, what, water, water metering is really effective. Um, because it, it tells you what the use is. Um, but if it's only metering one thing, then it's, then it's a challenge to.
Well, it should not know more information. So should, should we request from them a statement that where, where it's getting metered? And therefore we're assuming that a four bedroom house is 600 GPD.
Yeah. I mean, that, I hope that I made that clear in my request for knowing what the meter covered.
And, and I know from past experiences, housing, you can say 600 GPD and it can vary extensive.
Yes.
Teenagers versus whatever. So, I mean.
Okay. But the design is what the design is.
Yeah. So if they have to meet the restaurant in the 600, yeah, they're probably right there. So I, I don't, do we, do we need to put something to them to say, give us metering and how many bedrooms are getting used in the house?
Well, they've already told us what they want to do. So honestly, the additional information, I'm hoping that the additional information gives us more information other than the week that he provided, which was a later week in the season. So I'm hoping that there's going to be information of metering earlier in the season.
Good.
To see if that, if, if say in September, their Mondays, I mean, their Saturdays weren't reading at 1,500, but were in fact reading at 221.
If you don't have the additional data rears, you could probably ask them for weekly sales as a proxy and we could basically gallons to sales over the slower week applied to the earlier weeks. You need some kind of proxy to reflect back on what the gallon usage would have been. And that, I mean, that could be up to him to decide how he wants to make that case.
Yeah. I, I think this.
And buying town water?
No, 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 I'm saying.
Okay. No, just curious.
I think the metering will be, will be pretty accurate, you know, once we get that, all that info.
You know, will he have any metering back when it was busy?
But I, I don't think he has it all. I, I, his description of him recently getting the meter led me to believe they didn't have it until.
I think chances would extrapolate the data from, you know, just.
But that, that's.
Way to it.
So the state allows a, a, a much lower per patron you GPD if it's paper plates versus full service, three course meal. You know, that's why you see a lot of restaurants, they, it's paper, right? So that, I think that's like, if you don't have a metering, it's 20 GPD. If you have a full restaurant where they're washing three, three glasses and salad dishes, it's like 40 GPD. So when, when they put, they went from 30 to 40 about four or five years ago. And a lot of restaurants caught in the middle. So now a lot of them are metering because it's just the state is way over. And then the other thing that you get into is, you know, you can put in innovative septic systems now in New Hampshire, which would allow you a lot more flow. So, so I, I, you know, I'm familiar with septic system. It's not an innovative septic system unless they change it. So perhaps that's an option they go that they, they do that. But you know, I, I think that's why metering is very effective and, and, and it's also to their best interest that they don't overload that septic system or it's going to fail. It's going to cost a hell of a lot of money to fix it. So. I was very aware of that and we owned it. So.
So, so let's assume that we, okay, meter looks great. You're 1,950 and you're allowed 21. And the metering continues. And in June and July and August, they're at 2,500. I mean, what happens then?
Then, then it doesn't meet the septic approval.
But I mean, is this, is this a condition?
I think more concerningly, if, if they're running that high above their design standard for that long, that system is going to fail.
No, but I, I guess my point is.
Then they'll have, then they'll have a real issue.
Is there some type of conditional approval? We can put on that and we can monitor it?
We can, we can ask them for bi-weekly metering results.
But then what happens if they go over?
They have to cut that.
Well, I guess, I guess if they're, if they're not clever enough to realize they have to, to do something about that circumstance. Um, we could simply say they're exceeding their septic allowance and say that the house can no longer be used.
Could we ask them for some type of mitigation plan? Like if you notice you're going over, what might you do to mitigate that? And see if they have ideas already for that contingency?
We can do that as well. If, this is under the auspices of a site plan review. So there, and, and the board made it clear that this issue is a threshold issue. So having the board be comfortable with what the limits of the septic system are and what the, the ongoing use of that septic system is, is a viable part of the approved septic site plan. We didn't, we, at no point did we tell them we were unconcerned about the septic load.
Yeah. And Dan also did say that if he was going to have a bigger event down there, he'd be bringing in porta potties.
Right.
And I know he had, he had two down there this summer that he used throughout the summer. I know they're gone now, but he was using porta potties. Uh, but you know, for the outside folks to use, I don't, I don't know if they got used.
And Jake, um, his son is Jake.
Jake, yes.
He, he's who was there because the father was had some, some surgery. But, um, he indicated that, he indicated that for a while they worked with having porta potties on the site. And then they just found that there were lots of times when nobody was using.
Right. Yes.
It's not enforceable with your customers.
So they were. So did we ever do, we, I remember this was two part where we approved operation of restaurant because of existing rules. And then did we ever do a final approval on this to bring in like what Jeff was just saying that is when you, is, is, are, are we going to approve saying when you have an event, you can have porta potties for, that serve as 50 people? We let, we let it be done in other places. And I guess, I think Hobie brought up at the last meeting that DOT said they can't have an event and keep the restaurant open at the same time. So I think that should, that should be in our condition of approval if it's not. I, I don't remember ever seeing a final.
We, we did not make that. The, the only thing that we said was holding back our approval was receipt of septic information that showed both the house and the restaurant could be utilized on that system.
Good.
So we did. So therefore we did not approve the use of that four bedroom apartment.
We did not finally approve that. No.
That was contingent upon the subject.
That's exactly correct. That's exactly correct. We did not grant a final approval without the receipt of more information.
So, so it sounds like we need to send them correspondence saying, you need to monitor. You need, you, you still have it proven to a septic. And I think we should bring up this whole thing about DOT approval. You know, I, I, I haven't seen, Hobie brought it up. I think maybe Glenn, you should go get it from the file and say, you have to meet what the DOT says.
Well, we absolutely.
And that really has nothing to do with septic.
You have to do that.
Yeah, you have to do that.
Yeah. I mean, there's, they don't have any, there's no wiggle room for that.
Yeah.
So are they not, um, meeting the?
I, I don't know. I don't know if somebody.
Well, I, I, I don't think they really, they've really haven't had any big events down there. I know they've had some smaller events.
Yeah.
But they haven't had any like 200 people events with a tent or anything else.
When's an event, an event?
Yeah. Well, yeah. You know, I mean, they've got the outdoor tables.
Yeah.
But that's, I wouldn't really consider that.
Oh, no, no, but I mean, if they have a car show or, you know, they might.
I mean, as we know, we don't have much say on the line. We don't know what else to do. Like there.
Or what DOT tells them to do.
So, but I think that should just be noted somewhere too.
Okay.
And it does impact the flow if they are having an event and the restaurant's open.
Yeah.
Then obviously there's more water getting used.
Is the board comfortable saying that what we would like to see for this monitoring is meter information every two weeks?
Yeah, but once again, what happens when they go over?
And one of the weeks. A mitigation plan?
Yeah. We don't know if they're going to go over. So I think we need the media information for us before we put the cart before the horse.
And then ask them to address it. I mean, they could go and do.
I guess my question is, can we approve it? Not knowing if they're going to go over their limit and we don't, you know, what do we do then?
Oh, I think the burden's going to be on him if his septic fails. You know, I think it's, it behooves him, you know what I mean? To kind of toe the line and, you know, monitor his water, his water usage.
So do we, so do we somehow in the condition, let him know that, you know, if he's over two weeks in a, in a row, he's going to have to stop using it. I mean, is that what we do?
I, I, Glenn, do we, do we have?
Only, only because it's so close.
Yeah. Because septic is approved by the state. What, what ends up happening? I mean, it does. Do we go and say at the state, you approve a septic system and it's not, it's being overused? You need.
No, because we, the town, the town also approves the septic system. Um, don't we use our CCD?
Yeah.
So we, we have an approval that matches the states, but we, if, if we're deferring to the state for some sort of inspection, um, and enforcement procedure, we are, that it's going to be a while.
So that's not, that's, that's not an issue.
It, it really.
Overriding the state.
Correct. We, we have our, we have the set, we approve the same septic system at the local level. And so if they're not adhering to that system, we have enforcement powers as well.
I think it's reasonable to request the data from the meter reading. I think it's also reasonable to ask if in fact the meter is metering both.
Oh, and, and absolutely. There's. Absolutely. I mean, that request has been made already.
You may not like the idea of a cure period, but that might be a, an avenue to go down on that. If we were to find, maybe it's requested monthly. If we were to find that you were out of compliance two months in a row, you'll be served a notice to come into compliance within X number of days, months, whenever the right time period is. Cause if you're going to have people renting the house, you can't, and you can't just somebody have saying, we're going to disrupt, remove all this, you know, the immediate shutdown is not logical. So like maybe the board can consider a 90 day cure period after a couple of periods of failure report. Just as an idea.
Well, I like your idea of the, although I think what might be more accurate is just a head count of people that come into the restaurant. And I'll bet they've got that.
But, but back in.
Somebody get my, you, you, you have, you have to go back to what they're using, how they're.
No, no, no. So I see you can take a day, you take a day this week where they use 1,500. Or, and, and you could probably come up with some number of people that came through the door and the amount of volume of water. And then go back to August and, and take that number and extrapolate. I, 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 just for an exercise, I don't think it's gonna.
Who's going to go sit there and come?
Oh no, I bet the restaurant has records of that.
I mean, there, there's different, there's different counts for if somebody's sitting at the bar.
I know.
Counts like somebody's full service plates, paperware and all this stuff. So state.
Yeah, let's, let's get our best information of what their actual meter use is on the site for an extended period of time. Because although I liked the information I saw over the one week, really odd week, really late in the season, can be seen as reflective of what's going on there when they're really working this summer.
Yeah. I, I think you do have to go back to, I think the first time they came in here, it was not going to be used as a restaurant. And the cooking was going to be done elsewhere. And so that's, that's kind of where it all started. So I think we have to keep that in mind too. So. But everybody clear on where we're headed?
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to send them another letter.
I know.
Michael Sununu alternate. Um, just remember, you guys don't do enforcement. That should be the board. You guys will end up making a recommendation. Your recommendation would be based upon a violation of a condition that you put in. So at the end of the day, the select board will have to do the enforcement. And I, I would think that to the point you made about renters, enforcement would probably end up being shutting down the restaurant, allowing the residential to continue. That's going to be the incentive for him to make sure that this is done properly. So I, I'm just throwing that out there and because you guys don't have to enforce, you don't want to, and you don't have the power to do that. So I'm just throwing it out there so that you guys, you know, were.
Thank you. Anybody else get any re-clear? Okay. Um, next item on the agenda.
There is much.
There's much.
No, it's, it's clear.
Claire is.
It's clear than much.
Uh, CIP update.
CIP update. If you'll notice, I didn't give you a CIP. I, I'm, I'm baiting, switching you. Um, we have two things we really have to do for zoning. One of them is fixing the, the ADU ordinance. And there's, there's a lot of things you need to consider here. Um, and there, there really isn't a lot you can do about any of it. Anything you see in red on this app is what the state is saying every town will do. So we, we can no longer have it be a special exception. It's just going to be a building permit. It, um, you, you can't ask for any more than one additional parking space for an ADU. Um, that, even though we all know, if there's a couple in there, there are very few couples in America that don't both have cars. Um, there's nothing you can do about that. Um, but there's, so anything that's red, our ordinance needs to reflect.
So I see red and red, red crossed off.
A lot of red.
Yeah. If, if it's, if it's red crossed off.
Um, it's what we have.
It is what we think.
Mike, you want to copy this?
Yeah.
Yeah, right here. I got, I ended up with.
For my files, there is four or five. In case I get CD.
So going back to the one parking space, we need to change that in ordinance, correct? Cause I think we say.
We say four.
Well, yeah. So we need to, that needs to change also, cause that's, could get challenged.
So you'll see in section four, one, four, one, four, four, one. We used to say off three page of parking, gravel parking shall be provided for at least four vehicles. We now say no more than one parking space shall be required for any ADU.
But elsewhere in our ordinance, it's, it gives parking per unit, I think. That also probably needs to be changed too, correct?
If. There is a potential depending upon what that standard is for.
Good.
If it's for just apartment buildings, no. You, the town can require more parking spaces for apartment buildings. But if, if we, we reference ADUs and parking elsewhere, then yes, I will need to find them.
So the one is just ADUs. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. That's enough.
So in more general terms, it, it sounds like, um, owners did not have to figure out how to subdivide. They could have put an ADU unit out and back.
Now, now they.
Now that, and not only can they do that, now they can, it can be detached.
Right.
Yes, absolutely. That, but that only occurred as of.
Right.
Back dated to July 15th, what really happened around.
Generally, this is. Generally, this is, this is allowing second residents.
It makes every property, everywhere, every property a two-unit property.
Is there anything? No, it's probably in here. Sir, keep anything from building to building. Two ADU units on the pros.
Yes, it is limited to one ADU.
And only two bedrooms.
Right.
Correct.
And only just to where what is.
ADU unit can hire a bedroom. Well, you can have one, can't have more than 50.
Sorry. Um. We'll go here, so you.
Systemed. I, I, on four, 14, four, one, four, talking about the size of the accessory unit. I thought the state said that the minimum allowance is not, you can build up to 950 square feet.
Unless the town allows, great.
And the town.
Right, but what we say is here, it should not be required to be, oh, less than 750.
Right.
Okay.
We're, we're, we can't, we can't tell them that it has to be based on 750.
So using the Connor example, though, they couldn't build necessarily 1,500 square feet of an accessory unit.
Oh, right.
Right?
Right. Well, that, the, our, our zoning law says a percentage of the original house, which.
Under the original.
Bigger than.
Right.
Right.
So if they have a 5,000 square foot original house.
Exactly.
Sure. They could have a very large.
So it behooves us to build in a limit.
Because that you absolutely.
Right, and why is this up to me? That's where I was going exactly, that, which is.
Send the rent.
If you didn't change what our standard is right now at all.
Right.
Unless the state said I had to.
Right, so anybody has a 5,000 square foot, they could actually literally build a second house as opposed to what is, you know, and, and put in 15, 1600 square feet.
Right.
Yes.
As a second house, and now you have two houses on a lot, technically, as opposed to.
900.
There's nothing, there's, there's no doubt about it. Now you can have two houses on.
Yeah, but again, the whole concept here is, it's.
Small.
These are supposed to be apartments.
Right.
Right? Not other homes. I, I, no, regardless, you get up to 950 square feet.
Next, it's, it's in a.
The next time you're in town, as you're going down 150, which is the, the main road in Kensington, turn off onto Brewer Road. Because there is a hall, a very standard 3,500 square foot contemporary home. It now has a 950 square foot accessory dwelling unit. And it's detached and it looks like a second home. And that, that is what New Hampshire will be from now. For anyone who can afford it, why the hell wouldn't you do it?
And 950 is a limit that we are already have the capacity, if our current zoning would support even something bigger if the original house is bigger. So we definitely need to do something with that.
Right, that's where I was gonna, I think you wanna look at, you know, obviously, they're gonna happen, but, you know, is there a size?
That you're comfortable.
That, that we're comfortable with, where these are really accessory units as opposed to second homes on the same lot.
The municipal association have a list, and you, you, you looked at it, it's like things that.
Yep.
We need to think about, right?
Yep, and we have, um, Derek Durbin went through line for line, the whole thing with recommendations. So I have that here as well.
We should just all reference it.
Yeah.
So that, that in the works, that's what we have to put in by next year. We have to do.
Yeah, we have.
That, that's why I wanted you to look at the ordinance as it stands now, when it changes that are required. I think if we really are considering that what the town should do is say the maximum size of an ADU is 950 square feet, because that, the state law does say, unless the town allows it to be bigger, they will not exceed 950 square feet, and you can't make them be smaller than 750 square feet.
So the state, we, the state said this happened July 1st, if I remember right, right?
Hmm.
But can, but we have to wait till town meeting to.
To change our.
To change our rules.
But the same law exists right now.
Right, so, so, so somebody could come in and do this right now.
They could come in and do it right.
But there's no, is there any mechanism for us to not allow it?
Not right.
Not?
Not right now.
We're in limbo.
If somebody has 6,000 square foot home, they could come in here and ask the town, do you have some ADU on the current ordinances?
But as soon as we start talking about it, doesn't that prohibit it?
No.
No, because it's state law.
Voted on.
It's state law. So all, all we can, all we can accomplish is making our ordinance not be in conflict with the state law.
Good.
Actually, there's an exception to that. If you schedule the public hearing with a specific change that's outlined, once you schedule the public hearing, they can't come in.
The building inspector can't grant a building permit.
Correct. And, and, and they can't come in and try to get grandfathered in the open end. I, I mean, you guys don't need to do a public hearing, you know, all you need to do is a wire.
So, so is this something that we should be working diligently for, like, next meeting to say? And then if we, if we need to, we modify it at town meeting. So, so are we, are we saying tonight, Glenn, go write something that says no more than 950? And next meeting, we put, we have a public hearing.
If, if our board is comfortable with that. And if they are uncomfortable with thinking about having a 2,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit, if you have a 6,000 square foot house, you definitely should do that.
I make a motion that next meeting puts 950 square meters in this, then we have a public hearing.
Second.
It's a poll and debate.
Hi.
Is there anything else, Glenn, that we should?
Catherine, would you just forward me Derek's comments? And I'll make sure that.
Electronically or just?
I'm loving electronic.
Yeah.
We all get it?
Yeah, I went and got it right back up there. We, he, he probably sent it to all the boards, to the select board, the zoning board, and, but it's dated August 7th.
You just, I'll be put personally to consider.
He broke it down, so it doesn't look as technical, and it's numbered up and just basically says, you don't have to make this change, but this is a change recommended. And he's already been paid to do that, so he may as well take his advice.
He billed us enough.
Well, yeah, that's my thought.
Uh, so public hearing next month, 150 square feet, right? Um. So any, any more discussion?
Either language.
Septic action.
God, I hate.
So the other issue is gonna be septic once again. Because I'm guessing the septic's are.
They happen.
No, I understand, but the septic's are generally approved for the houses that are already built.
Correct.
So you add two more, add two more built bedrooms on, that's gonna be the sticking.
No, and the state, the state, the state has already made it clear that accessory dwelling units are not just two additional bedroom loads on the, on the septic system.
What are?
It's two bathroom, it means two bedrooms, and it's also kitchen facilities.
Yeah.
It has to meet all the current.
Oh, no, I get that.
I'll tell you, when I did my ADU, that's exactly what I, I, I came before you guys, because I had one bedroom plus the kitchen, and I had to expand my septic.
Right.
Right.
That purpose to cover the, the new low for the ADU.
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, you still have to, if your existing septic won't handle the load, you have to.
That's gonna be the new second point, I'm guessing, for someone thinking, oh, great, we'll throw up a.
Well, it's detached, so everything, water supply.
Yeah.
Right, refuse, and.
Sure.
One parking spot.
So I, I hope the water commission is on this. We've already filed a lot of this, John.
Yeah, we have, we have.
At the end of the day, if someone's gonna build an ADU on a lot, and her home is occupying whatever percentage of the lot, they commit to the building permit and try to build a unit that's 12, you know, but it, they have to meet the setbacks and all the other.
All the current base.
Yeah, so, so the reality of, you know, somebody doing a 2,000 square foot ADU in town is probably pretty slim.
Especially some water.
Yeah, there are lots of. In the, but, but in, in newly, in newly developed subdivisions, and when I say newly developed subdivisions, I mean, anything past 1885. If you're, if you make your lots, you can easily put on.
But.
A very large ADU.
But then you get into the HOAs, right, which is still.
HOAs will not.
They can't overlook.
They can.
They cannot.
But I think, I don't think they can, but I think that's a lawsuit.
I think it's a.
They have. And I, I, I think they will, but until they do, there are gonna be a lot of the HOAs that tell their, their, um, owners, their ownership that they can't do it.
Yeah. Did, did the ZBA approve one in Deer Trees?
An ADU?
Yeah.
Detached?
No.
Oh.
No.
Attached.
Maybe attached.
I think they.
Maybe attached, yeah.
They went through.
But not detached.
Not detached, yeah.
Okay.
So.
And people within an HOA can get together and challenge their HOA, and that's up to them to do.
But I, I think, like, I, like you say, that's a, that's a lawsuit, so. Okay, so we all set over that?
Um, there was one other thing I wanted to ask about. Oh, no, one other thing I wanted to make clear. Um, in what is just an obscene mistake, but there's nothing we can do about it. If there is an accessory structure on your property, like a garage, that doesn't meet standard setbacks, that's a non-conforming use, if they wanna put an ADU in it, they absolutely can do it. The state law says they can do it. Setbacks can't be considered. But if you wanted to expand that garage to use it as a garage, you'd have to go to the ZK. So, so if you have a garage on your property line, and you want to add a second floor and put in an ADU, which will have way more impact on your neighbor than putting an extra car bay on your garage, you can just do.
How about the, how about the foundation size? Does that, if it's a non-conforming, does?
You can't expand the non-conformancy.
Sure.
But you can use the non-conformancy with no input from the ZK.
But it, but our, when it says it has to be 625 square feet for a living unit, so does that say?
No, the state law said you can't make it, you cannot require it be less than 750.
So, so if the garage doesn't meet that, I guess they can go up.
Sure.
They can go up.
They could be.
They can go up.
Or out.
Now they can.
Well, like, can't, can't believe there's a second.
Didn't you go out on the wall that wasn't, that wasn't impacting the setback?
You had a, it was right on the property line, it's okay, but you could go out.
We can expand the foundation, so.
And a labor.
You could, if, if what doesn't comply are, say, two sides in the, in, in one of the sides, because they fall in the setback.
Go the other way.
You can go, you could go the other way.
Yeah, just go the other way.
And expand the, you can expand the footprint in a way that.
Into your driveway.
Right, that didn't impact the, the setback.
Okay, so I think we're all set for next month for a public hearing.
Hmm.
Um, so we're gonna see more next month on CIP.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of other things coming up. Sidewalk. Um, Sue and I and Brian, we've been talking, we found that there was a design for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Meadow to hopefully.
Just a KDA design.
Yeah, we, I, I get to be paid Jones and Beach $5,551. But now we're looking at, and, and part of that contract was they were supposed to, um, give us an estimate, but we, there was an estimate that went to the warrant. So right now, Brian and I are working on what would be the updated cost, and we're also gonna meet with GOP, so we have a design. Um, so I think that's gonna be, uh, something we, we can put on the warrant. The planning board recommends if everybody wants to do that. I think it's a high priority safety issue in town, personally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to get it, I don't, I think the other thing is, when we did it from the school crosswalk up to Meadows, that sidewalk's well-used.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I see the doctor walking his dog there all the time, so. No, I, I think, and, and it's part of our plan of sidewalks and making these connector loops, so um, hopefully next month, we'll have more on that. What do we have in the sidewalk fund? Do we still? I, I think Donna said it's 25,000.
Yeah, okay.
But is it not that?
It's not that.
And then, but we, we had another five assists coming from we, we, we're from, but, you know. And I, I think the, the other, the warrant article was 67,000 that didn't pass, so.
Correct.
Um, so we're starting, some costs look like they're going up, some of them going down, so, you know, we will have a price to put out to the public.
What costs would down?
Curbing.
Really?
Yeah, surprising, you know, we're just looking at some costs, so. You know, asphalt is.
Asphalt.
It's all up there.
Asphalt is all up. Asphalt is up now.
Go to section.
That's why the state's doing a lot of repaying.
Yeah, just cruising around 65 bucks. It's cheaper than, it's a lot cheaper than it was a few years ago.
Um, I guess the other thing on, we, we all received from Sue a letter from Amy Manzali, Beastian Environmental Law LLC, on the verdicts. Um, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it.
I did. Well, I actually drove by the, the other day and saw the plant.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't realize that it had been approved by anybody.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, I, I, I just, I don't know, anybody else get any comments at all? I mean, go ahead.
They're like this tall, and they're.
I heard them referred to as Charlie Brown trees.
I mean, they're, they're probably two feet tall, and they're probably six feet apart.
I mean, I, I just took this letter and read it and said, this, this is like a summary of the whole issue out there, right? You know, she's saying, she's trying to say there's internal town issues on this. And then she says, we want to make this everyone's satisfaction, including the planning board, well, we never approved it. And we've never been informed, but she's talking in this letter about communication and how, and it's just like, we've never been informed that they were trying, and then she goes on and says that there's a change of ownership at 319. Well, what, what?
So what, what the heck does that have to do with someone?
Well, they, they have to agree to the buffer, but realistically, they didn't say what they're planting, right? I mean, that's the issue.
No, but I think, Catherine, the whole thing was, we have, we had a conditional approval in December of 2022. We're talking about that the select board had to go back to them and say, hey, where's the plantings? And then they write this letter saying, hey, town, you know, you're giving us a hard time when we've gone through, like, two and a half years later.
Three years.
And now they, they just go and plant it, and the planning, and they say, we're gonna work with the town. But the planning board has approved it, and the condition, the approval says we have to approve it, so.
And they're planted.
And they're planted. And it's kinda like, so now she'll be able to add another letter to her account of we've done so many things. You know, and then, and then letters, she also said, the farm remains committed to meeting the remainder of the conditions of a site plan approval has been working diligently to do so. Well, to be planting two and a half years after approval just seems, if it's that diligent, I wonder where they're coming from, so. I, I, I don't know, I, I just, it makes me very frustrated that, you know, that's where they're at, and.
Well, my thought was after seeing those plants, how many years are they gonna be until those serve any purpose at all?
And, and I don't want that.
Blocking anything.
The precedence that we as a board say that's acceptable plan, because we certainly didn't do it at the post office, it was all Garvey, he didn't have to do that.
Um, am I mistaken that we, did we also receive, like, our, our comment was that had to meet the approval of the neighbor?
Yeah.
And.
We did get a letter from the neighbor, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So why wouldn't we just get on with it?
Yeah.
Neighbor's happy, why are we, why are we gonna spend our time being unhappy about it?
Because I, I don't think we wanna set that as a precedent, as that's what we accept. And I, and I think, Sean, personally, now they're saying the town isn't acting responsible. Why, why didn't they come to the board in the spring of 2023 and say, hey, we, we don't wanna plant these yet? And then they're saying it's because, you know, there was gonna be a change of ownership. What's that got to do with anything?
I'm not disagreeing, I just choose not to let things affect me emotionally. I'm just saying at this time, if what we need is plantings that are approved by the neighbor, it's impacted, and the neighbor's saying they're good, then I'm good. And doesn't mean everybody else has to be, but I'm not agreeing with the approaches taken and the commentary and all the things you're saying are, are fine. But is it relevant at this stage?
I don't know if the neighbor, the new neighbor. I don't know if the neighbor, the new neighbor's been there during an event.
Well, the new neighbor wrote the letter. I got all right, they, the person who wrote the letter, we shouldn't assume things on their behalf.
We shouldn't assume that they were educated into the situation that they're moving.
If you're gonna write a letter saying I accept something, then you should take responsibility for the letter you write.
And, and there haven't been events before the plantings. There, there were events going on when there was no planting.
Always. Looked there.
I mean, that, that has happened, and I think one of the things that's important to take away from this is moving forward with site plan review requirements, being more detailed about choices of plantings for buffer purposes that include types of plants and having some type of catalog to pull from to say, if this is for noise, or if this is for view, or whatever it is the buffer is supposed to function for, then we need, uh, objective data on types of plants, growing season, how long they live, to have to say, if you're going to do this as a condition, then it needs to be chosen from, you know, make a decision here, your choices that would meet those needs. If we wanna have that level of accountability, we need to build it into the plan to begin with.
Well.
But I think at the time that was written, it still was a lot going on. And so, to choose a vegetative buffer that was satisfactory to the neighbor and the planning board is more vague than saying for a view or sound barrier, here are appropriate types of plantings, or it should be mature. If that's what's being recommended, or it should be not mature. Right? If it's gonna die in 20 years, then what? You know, so I, I think we need some more information to have available to pull from. So, in the future, we learn from this and do it more, uh, and specifically, I guess, have more specific information in the actual conditions.
I don't think the owners should be on us to tell them what to plant. They should come to us with their proposal, and they frankly didn't do that. Every other, every other plant that comes in here, comes in with a diagram detailed.
Right.
Most of the time, almost all the time, talking about what the plant's gonna be, and even describing the size of the plant that's gonna be planted.
Did we get that?
And they didn't do any of that.
In the email?
No.
So Catherine, I, I, maybe we should, maybe it should have been more specific. But why didn't they come to the board? This, this whole letter is about lack of communication. We can have better communication. Why didn't they come in the spring of 2023? But the select board had to go to them and say, hey, you did not meet the condition. And then, you know, she adds that to her count of how many, we have this many communications and, you know, it, it's, it's just.
But even after that, why didn't they come to us and say, hey, here's what we're thinking of planting?
Right, and there was an email where I wrote, the select board requested they draft, like, make a drawing with how it was gonna look with.
Right, it was just this.
But I don't think it said what was being planted, like what the actual.
I don't think, the planning board never heard back about it.
Okay, that email should have been forwarded to the planning board, and there was some discussion about how the, because of the lawsuit, that the communications needed to go through the select board, even though in a different situation, it would be the planning board directly communicating, and I don't know if I misunderstood that, but that was something I thought I heard in this meeting, or it was someone from the planning board at the select board meeting saying, just because of the lawsuit.
Either way.
Gotta communicate.
If, if the planning board has the approval on the plants.
Then they should have been.
Yeah, we get the approval on the plants, so I guess we're at a point.
Yeah.
Are we approving these plants or not?
Do we know what that?
We require the satisfaction of the planning board, yes, but. Right. It sounds to me like the board has to make a determination whether they're satisfied or not, given what it's planting.
Oh, sure. And then what was the exact language? I believe it was to the satisfaction of the neighbor. And is anybody, and how is it, I think we have the exact language, you know? I just wanted to.
I don't believe I have appropriate, no, it's a decision.
Here we go.
Have it right.
Farm shall install a vegetative buffer along a portion of the common property boundary line between Vernon Family Farm and the property located in South Road to the reasonable satisfaction of the current owners and the new fields planning board. Vegetative buffer shall be maintained by Vernon Family Farms since and assigned so long as the property is used for power works.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I guess we should go by and see what everyone, see what each of us thinks.
Yeah, next, next meeting we'll say. You know, and I think we should be keeping in mind that is that, what, I mean, it's not what we made Garvey do, it's not what we made the post office do. So, in this instance, are we saying, okay, it's, it doesn't have to meet that, and those were six-foot ivory eyes, three foot apart. I think that's, is not what we approved for Garvey in the post office.
Yeah, remember, Garvey put information on the plan.
Yeah, I mean, and I think the other thing you need to be keeping up in mind is it's supposed to be a scenic view on that east. I mean, it's, it says that, and the easement several times, it's supposed to be a scenic view and, you know.
That's another, that's an effort.
Well, I know, that, the time, time's supposed to be taken care of. Um, so I guess, I guess we gotta go all, go look at it. I've heard negative criticism from other people about it. Uh, and say, next month, is we approve it, or they have to do something different?
What is the analysis that we will be expected to perform, um, to determine whether or not our subjective opinion of people?
Or reasonable.
I would give pretty guidance to the person that lives there. You know, if the woman or man who wrote that letter is objecting to this, I think it's very important, the planning board to help protect the rights of that citizen and go out there and make sure it's a reasonable buffer. If the person that's impacted is saying, I accept this, I think, it just seems like an overstep, unless I'm missing something, as to why we would go back and re-regulate something that we did not define clearly in 2022.
I.
But as, as the planning board, you, you're dealing with this issue all the time. I mean, Garvey's a great example. You, you didn't request whether neighbor, you know, what the neighbor thought the buffer should be. You guys determined that a buffer was required regardless of what the neighbor. And it's, I mean, you do that because you're trying to represent what the expectations for developing this town is gonna be for any property.
She was gonna go.
And I get your, I get your point, but at the same time, whether it's, it's not just about this neighbor, but it's about every neighbor that's gonna be there. The expectation is, is that there's a certain standard, and yet, you're right, it's subjective. Right? You know, all of people have a subjective nature about it, the city government board.
She did a great job, though, by getting more clear in what our directions were, to your point, telling people what it needed to be. I'm just saying, we went back to 2022 and retried a decision we already made back.
Say this, this board was put in a difficult position because they never came to describe what they were gonna plant, because I would have guessed, if you described to you that it's gonna be two feet high, we probably would have said, well, that's insufficient for, for the rationale that we were requiring the buffer, you need to do something different.
I would again, put back to this board, we should learn from that, we should ask great questions going forward. But this already happened.
No, no, the approvals didn't happen.
Supposed to get our approval.
They were supposed to get our approval. I mean, it's the bottom line.
That's, that's their modus operandi.
That's part of the condition, though.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I just wanna make two things clear. We can, we can talk about how the planning board responded to both Vernon Family Farm and, um, Winkley Way.
Winkley Way.
Way. One was a site plan review, for which we have regulations in place that guide us in the discussion of buffering. Vernon Family Farm, we had an agritourism application, which was and, and remains through the guidance that state law gives us, a real question.
Morpheus.
So, we have, we have a condition that says a reasonable buffer that the board will look at and that the abutter will look at. And that word reasonable is very important from my perspective. And when you look at that, the only other place I see that kind of language is remarkably in lawsuits, which is what we were always worried about in every step we took with the Vernon Family enterprise. And I gotta tell you, if, if an abutter who was given equal footing in that conditional, um, approval statement as the planning board, we said that there will be approval by the abutter and the planning board for a reasonable buffer. If the abutter says they're comfortable with it, we're going to have, I'm hard-pressed to say it's not a reasonable buffer. Now, there are all of those inadequacies of how that particular property owner has responded to requests by the town. Virtually in every opportunity, if they have said they were wanting to work with us, they have done so in a way that would not seem to mirror that desire. Um, so the board definitely has a conditional approval that says they have, they get the opportunity to opine as to whether a reasonable buffer has been presented here. But let me tell you, our argument is weakened by the abutter giving the same right to opine on that buffer as signed off.
I hear you, Gordon, but it still sent a planning board house, and they went ahead and planted it, and we were just looked upon as. So, I think we all need to go out and look at it. I've heard negative comments from the public about it. Um, and next month, we need to say, yeah, it's good enough. I, I think you guys can go to pay good comments there, advice and. So take a ride by, I guess. Um, any more discussion on that?
Uh, I think it's notable when, when we do respond to point out that a step was missed.
The what?
A step was missed. Rather than just responding, however, we respond, I think it's important to note that a step was missed as far as obtaining the uh, reasonable satisfaction prior to the planting.
Which, which is?
But that's, I think, the bigger sticking.
Which is? Our September 21st, 2025 letter, which puts it on the town, yes. You were gonna do this, like, kind of, you're just.
Even wanna engage with that.
You go back to 2016.
Yeah, I to, I totally understand what you're saying. I, I am, I get that. I just think whatever our response is, we also, it would be important to note that a step was missed.
I got it. Um, I think the only other thing on here is September minutes. Everybody get a chance to look at it?
Sorry, for one reading of another question, it's a quick. Um, do we have authority or say over the flights getting created by the railroad down at the, uh, the junction and the amount of rumors that they're putting out? Seems to are exceedingly. General Towns order, is that followed with different jurisdiction? That whole area is lit up like. Yeah, it doesn't bother me. I can stay down there, but I do feel for the people in that neighborhood down there that it's lit up like a shop.
Railroads have the different rights.
They do, they do have different rights. It doesn't mean that we couldn't, uh, write to the Bureau of Railroads and say, we're concerned that in such a rural a location, there seems to be the need for excessive lighting. But they definitely are their own, they're their own governmental entity.
That come from this board or from this?
Should come from the board of select.
On that same line.
Anytime.
Jam, haven't paid well to mobile?
I did not. And I promised Catherine that I would include her, but I simply didn't get back in touch with it, so. I, I apologize, and I still, I will, it's absolutely on my to-do list. It's gonna be, it's been, correct? So I, I will absolutely work on it this, before the next meeting, and Catherine and I will go out there.
The other thing in the notes, the notes is the whole thing on boards, which is.
All that Kobe mentioned.
Sorry, I mean, I, maybe we should just keep on our, and, uh, things we're working on for, for some ADU noise. I thought it was one of the.
Well, we have to, we have, okay, the time is short, but the statute says, the new state law says, we will make provision in our commercial zones for multifamily development. That's what the state law says, and they've granted us one town meeting, it's time to do it. Uh, and I've, I've thought about this with the context, new fields, we don't have a very big commercial zone. Uh, and there, the state law says, in instances where there are reasons that they exclude the, the use of commercial land as, um, residential, the town can make those standards. I can't, I, all I know is we don't have a lot of commercial zone land. Um, if it's, if it's all located around the railroad tracks, um, and we can make some statement about that not being, uh, um, residentially conducive attitude, that's something we could consider, but this is going, this, we only have one year's leeway before a developer could just take us to.
So Glenn, I think you just talked yourself into addressing something else, okay?
I, I mean, we are, all, all of my towns have to do this. I, I don't deal with a town that doesn't have to do this. And in those communities, there are excessive expanses of commercially zoned land. We are not that community.
Uh, but we have to address it.
But we have to address it, so who here, this person is not me, who here knows the inventory of the commercially zoned properties? Do we even know how many there are?
Probably not more than 20.
It's not that many. It's basically along the way.
Yeah.
You're talking about, what, your property, the show properties, the campground. The campground, sure, you know.
Being within the depth, it only goes back 600 feet.
Right, right. Fortunately, David, not much.
Oh, Brian's property, right?
Well, the Garvey area is, the cemetery, the DOT, and Irving.
Well, then you got.
That, that's, that's my concern, because, you know, that's, that's my consideration. If we are looking at a majority of parcels that are actually recently developed in particular ways, that don't provide a lot of opportunity for mixed use, then the burden is lessened for us.
Well, also, you know, it's, there's no, there's no water sewer out there either.
Yeah, but that, there's no water considering tanks, and there's no water in sewage groundwater, but we have hundred parcels in each of those towns.
Right.
That are commo, that are commercially zoned, so it's harder to say they're already developed, they've been developed recently, you know, the last 10 years, so it's not, it isn't like those uses are haggard and, and unproductive, they're really productive uses that don't have a lot of onsite ability to, say, pop up, you know, 30 units of multifamily house.
Given all this, though, and again, I agree, there's not a whole lot of developable opportunities. That's the driving need, probably the only one.
It, there's conceivably depending, you know, solid 20-plus acres out there could be pretty, pretty easily developed into something multi-use. You know, the, the rest of the acreage, there's another 25 or more, I don't know, there's more than 40 altogether, but there, there are some encumbrances with the river and some other aspects of the property, which I think would potentially cause delay in development, it probably would have prevented development, right? There, there's some archaeological considerations, some pre, you know, pre-contact Native American stuff that goes on, especially along the river. Um, the house that my mother still lives in was a Helen house from back in, you know, I don't know when, 16 something, I mean, that's been noted as eligible for being on the historic register just because of that fact. I mean, that's been noted as eligible for being on the historic register just because of that fact. So again, I mean, there's parts of the overall parcel that. You know, may create some hurdles, but from, from the drive entrances north. You know, that field and, and back to the depth of the commercial zones, that's, that's a pretty.
Given that we developed.
It's a pretty easy lift. That field is wide open and these huge, yeah, somebody, somebody could come along and, and to Jeff's point, I mean, yeah. Water's right across the street, sewer's not far. If you're going to put something in that significant, you probably. Be more than willing to spend the dough to make that happen.
Well, there's that one rock in the middle too.
But anyway, and I, and I don't have much of a choice. If, if you, if there isn't, if we couldn't say there was only one developable parcel. Because then they can just simply say, we're working on doing, we're working on coming up with something for that one parcel.
But yeah, let's say the LaMonte property could be on that. That's not in the.
Commercial zone.
It's not. Just one lot, I think. Right? Just one lot.
If, the, the, I'm sorry, yes, the, the Stratton Tire.
Right. No, no, no. But, but obviously the Stratton Tire. I mean, how many can be developed? I don't know. Literally probably on one here, right?
And somebody could come along, maybe between the Stratton Tire location and what's back there for, for the other commercial development that's not really. You know, the storage.
Well, well, somebody took the storage, somebody bought the storage lots and could say, okay, we're going to knock down the store.
Excellent. Another potential.
Some horrible, or Brian's, Brian's space. Right? And then all, all of them wait.
Yeah, there's migrants there too, probably coming back. So here's what I will, um, send out to everyone. The town of Brentwood is actually working with a consultant to help us with this. And they have come up with. A new density calculation that Brentwood intends to use in their commercial zone, which runs both sides of 125. All the way through the town. And along 27, which is basically the northern part of town. So we have a lot of area that this state law impacts. We have to do something and we are doing something. And it looks like the density that we're going to use for multi-family development is six acres. Six units. Per developable acre. So for every acre not encumbered by wetlands or shoreline or anything. The, the density calculation will be six units per acre. And then up to eight units per acre if those two additional units are used for workforce housing.
And the units are one bedroom, two bedroom?
To, to be determined by the ability of the developer to cite adequate septic and water because Brentwood has no. Neither of those utilities either. So I will, I will send you for the board to look at that information. Um, I believe Kingston intends on using that same density calculation. We, we had a couple of developers come and talk with us and discuss whether or not those were numbers that they could. Work with on realistic developments and they both indicated that they could.
I, I think Gordon has some, looking at a similar type of density. Were required. I mean, I think everybody's going, man, this road.
I mean, we had, you have to do something.
Yeah.
You have to do something.
Well, choice.
So I will, that will go, I'll, I believe that I saw an email today that said that the, the new draft language for that. Has been sent to us by our consultant. So I'll just send that along for the board to think about.
What, what if we went set four? Is there any challenge to that or?
I mean, if, if it's not, the, the concern is you don't want to put on your book something that doesn't work because if it doesn't work. And the developer can show in court that it doesn't work, that they wanted to, and it doesn't, and you had. Maybe an inkling that it didn't, they could ask for a builder for it in court.
So, so don't you take our setback requirements and everything and look at a parcel and say, how many units could you log?
Yeah, that's, you would, would exactly do that.
Well, that's what it's available to, right? If it's 28 acres, it looked at the setbacks, it'll say, okay, I have, with the infrastructure, the roads and the septic. I have 12 acres, so I can get 12 times six, 72 units.
So, so where, where did, where did the six come from?
Honestly, it came from a knowledge of what is required for making a multi-family development work.
You cannot make some of it.
Because we have multi-family ordinance in Brentwood that we've had on the books for 30 years. And it's never been used because one of these actual two developers tried and couldn't use the numbers. The, the numbers that were in the ordinance didn't work.
So, so we could go and say, since. It may not meet our other impervious surface setbacks.
We would, no, we would still, it's still a site plan review process.
Yeah. So it's a maximum of sense.
Correct.
If you can meet all of.
If you can meet our other standards.
So it's going to depend on how big they want units to be, two bedroom, three bedroom, one bedroom studio. So I guess, I guess.
Is that making sense? I don't remember.
30 feet? Isn't it 35 feet or?
Yeah. That and that'll play a dead.
It's usually limited by what the fire department says they feel comfortable protecting. Yeah.
But that's, that's how developers do math, right? How many stories can I build? What's my footprint? How many years can I do?
So I guess we should start a list. I, I'd like it to be on the agenda. ADUs, noise, multi-prep.
And I'll get that information out to you within the week.
So going back to the minutes as we went on. Motion to approve is written.
All sides are in.
All in favor? I, I. Each of the, the motion to adjourn second.
Favor.